237 Farms LLC. They are not here, they don't have to be here to the rule. Any questions, comments from the public? From the board?
Any issue?
I think it was up or something when I was there.
Close the public hearing. Call the major orders and strokes in the white space. 5.27 is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Action on the minutes. Motion to the court. Motion in the second, any discussion? Those in favor? Vote. Congratulations to the agenda.
Have another sir?
On the table one.
Correct, yes.
Public comments? Lois?
No.
Happy New Year, all good? Business item 5.1. I put my glasses on. Review.
That's the table. That's the table.
Yes, we're table in 5.1. 5.2 Review and approve for new application for marijuana cultivation facility 237 Farms LLC.
Motion to the court.
Motion in the second, any further discussion? All those in favor? To vote. 5.3 Discuss, review pending property tax foreclosures.
The town clerk has put together a pretty comprehensive list here of the pending foreclosures. Throughout the date, the day today, there have been a handful that have come through and paid. I haven't been able to update your list, I can read them all off you if you want, but there's quite a few that have paid. The only comments that I'd like to make about what you see here is you'll note that the town clerk put notes on here of all of the efforts beyond what's required that they've made from the office to try and contact these people. Also, mobile homes are indicated on here that are not on land. I would, you know, just like to draw attention to that. And the code enforcement officer also has expressed concern on the last page, count two, twenty-eight fifteen, which is something, which is a property he's working on as a junkyard violation potentially. So I bring those up just in the event that the selectmen are interested in waiving the foreclosure process on any of these accounts. In the event they do decide to waive the foreclosure process, it doesn't stop the town from having liens on the property and so forth, it just stops us from, the town, from taking possession of the properties.
You said we had mobile homes that aren't on land?
Correct. They're not on, they're not on property that they own, it's a rented law. Yep, it's a rented law.
Gotcha.
Thank you for the clarification. They don't house folks.
I'm surprised we don't have them.
I'll assess them if we do.
Perfect.
Any discussion on this tonight? Is the first process, if you could get us that updated list at some point. I don't need it, I don't remember who has ones tonight.
So the four-
That was, that are kind of, what?
Those that came in and paid. There were several today.
Yep.
Or yesterday, yesterday.
So the foreclosure date is the seventeenth, which falls before the next selectmen's meeting. So if you folks want to waive any of these, we would need to discuss that this evening.
I mean, motion to waive all those mobile homes that do not sit on property that they-
Second.
I'm second.
Motion in the second. Any discussion? Beyond... How do you identify those? Go back to the book.
Yep, so the mobile homes that we guessed.
You just go back to the first page.
Yeah, and I also put a little mark on it for the highlights.
Further discussion? All those in favor? Vote. Do we have others?
Do you know what we're, what we're down to? Now that those are out of the way. Rough guess?
I'd have to count them, Scott, I'm sorry, we have one.
Nope, no, that's fine.
They'll automatically close anyway on the seventeenth, they're not picking one.
So there's eight, eight or nine that were paid today. You can take those out, and then there's ten mobile homes, eleven, twelve, thirteen mobile homes that would be addressed by what you just discussed. Any thoughts on the junkyard that the code officer is working on?
Hopefully, like I said, not too.
You said that's the twenty-eight fifteen one?
Uh, the two-eight-one-five, yep.
Have you had, what has the communication been with that?
So I know that the code officer has been doing violation notices and so forth because of the material that's there, car carcasses and that kind of stuff. So his concern that he's voicing is that it could be, you know, potentially a junkyard, so I don't know as far as the communications with the clerks is what she's got noted here, sending certified mail and so forth, so. Is that what you were asking, Jim?
Yeah. So no communication with them at all? Acceptable letters there? A lot of them, try to just get them on the phone if we have phone numbers or anything like that. And, um, I didn't realize that one was a C E O.
He just brought that-
That he was working on that, yeah?
He just brought that to me today.
Okay. I don't see, what would the need be to with the foreclosure on that? I wouldn't see a need if they, on that one, if they don't pay it, foreclose on it and sell it.
I only express concern if there's hazardous materials or any of that kind of stuff, we don't want to be responsible for it.
We don't know that.
But we don't know that, no. Beyond what the code officer has noted.
And if they don't clean it up and we don't foreclose on it, then how do we get it cleaned out? What's going to happen then, what will the code officer do?
So you can continue to make violation notices. We would continue to be able to, let's just say goes through the whole court process for the cleanup, and we end up getting a court order that allows the town to clean it up. It could continue to get leaned on the property. So then, if the town does choose to foreclose on it in the future or if the property sells, then the proceeds from the sale would offset those liens. Whereas if we take possession of it, the, and we own it, then we have to pay for it.
I think you, no, you did jump in on that one.
I mean, I can, I can see with the, the mobile homes, but not on this one.
Well, so we can't recoup, what have we really got there that we know is bad or we don't?
He's got vehicle carcasses and that kind of stuff. He's, he says it's, uh, he's been doing violations because it's a junkyard.
You said carcasses?
Junk cars.
Junk cars.
Junk cars.
No, no, no bodies, I mean. Well, it said Ricky over the fact that-
Sorry, my, my Litchfield talk was coming out here.
So if you foreclose on the property-
Yep.
And then we have to clean it up. We can't recoup that cost prior to-
If you foreclose on the property, the town owns it.
And the town can sell it.
But when you sell it, we only can keep
what you're paying.
What we're owed, basically.
Correct, in taxes, yep.
But we-
But not cleanup costs.
Oh, I think you could get cleanup costs, couldn't you?
My understanding of the, and I will be happy to be corrected here, is my understanding is, is that under the new tax foreclosure laws, you can says, the liens can be satisfied on the property. But the town cannot lean itself if we take possession of, of the property. So if it remains in the ownership of the old owner and we follow through with the, you know, cleanup and end up having to lean the property, then all of those liens can be satisfied at the time of sale if the town chooses to do that in the future. However, if we take possession of the property and then a cleanup is done in the future, I don't know under the new state, under the new law, that we can add that to the account to satisfy, I don't have a hundred percent.
So why would we even want to clean it up once we foreclose on it? We fore- foreclose on it and we sell it, we don't, why would we clean it up?
That's certainly an option, that could be a condition of sale, is that whoever buys it-
As is.
That would, as is, within six months, they have to have the, all the violations corrected by, that's certainly an option too.
But is the town, if the town takes ownership of it, can they do it, they find some dirty pump on that? Are we allowed?
Yes, we would be.
That's my point, but I want a good one, though.
The part is, the part is, the cars and stuff, that's not like, is it, is it, they spill oil and you-
Well, it's what I'm saying, it's like, you hear it.
Ground there, it's like, I don't think the town wants to be, that stuff can get pretty pricey real quick on the scoreboard, so. For less than a thousand dollars in back taxes.
It's not just a thousand dollars in back taxes, that's two thousand twenty-two. There's still a balance on twenty-three and a balance on twenty-four, which is probably about two thousand dollars for each of those years.
And next year we would get another bite at the apple, we'd be able to foreclose on twenty-three.
I don't think there's any incentive for the individual to do anything at all if the foreclosure is waived, that's, wait, that's just my opinion on that one. You definitely do not want to take possession of mobile homes. And I, I mean, we've got the option that we could do that now.
Can we, can we at least maybe, is the code enforcement able to look this over?
Yes, he's the one that brought this to my attention. Because I gave him this list and I asked him to flag anything that was concerning, and that's the one he brought to me.
Do you know how many vehicles are there?
I do not.
Can we give pictures or maybe something so we know?
Well, the thing is, it's going to foreclose before our next meeting. That's, that's why, um, if it's going to be, if the foreclosure is waived, it's going to have to be tonight. Because, um, today's, uh-
I thought you said, I thought you said we had one more meeting.
Not before this, no.
No, not before the town, you're right.
No, because the seventeenth is right before the next one.
It's also a mobile home, it's just not on a-
It's on its own lawn.
So that is a mobile home?
It is, but it's on its own.
On its own point four, I heard. Next to last, or the last.
Of this here?
So I just didn't think it was because it wasn't highlighted.
Well, I only highlighted the mobile homes that were not on a parcel.
Not on?
Yeah. Because as you know, those are ones that you can't, you can't do anything with, or you can, but they're-
So on the card, unless I'm looking at the wrong one, this card shows one oh six Polotov.
Yeah, there's a couple, couple cards later.
Later or before?
Before.
Before, right before, sorry.
Yeah, it's one oh seven, and it is one oh seven on the-
A little slow.
And that's the ninety-four, nineteen ninety-four. So it's, it's basically thirty years old.
So we really don't know how many kinds of it?
I don't know that right now, no. I did not need to ask him, I'm sorry.
Is there a contrast from the old animal house?
You will, oh.
Well, only, with some age, you know that.
The one with the dog that we just recently?
No, no, it, it was called the, because it was a, it was a wild place, anyways. Is that the one across the street?
I think I believe it, I guess.
Do they even live there? Because they do have a different mailing address.
I, I thought it was Baker, yeah.
I'm, got a motion, I have a heard a second.
I'll second it.
Motion in the second, to wait. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Vote. Any others you want to talk about? Item five point four, warrant review approval for main public employees retirement plan updated. We're in the well first step, point four.
Do you like me to give a rundown on that, or?
Sure. About a three to three.
Yeah. Simply put, the issue that we ran into and, as we worked through, worked through hiring processes and so forth, is that right now, the town, through the main public employees retirement system, main PERS, we have the A N plan offered for administrative employees, it's like folks that would work in this office, if you will, or the highway department labors. There's also a public safety plan, which is the one N plan, there are others, but the one N plan is the plan that the police department is enrolled in. And currently, the fire chief position, which is a full-time position here in Oxford, is under the A N plan. And as a recruitment tool, we'd like to, I would like to see that in the public safety plan, because anybody who's been in the fire service is going to be looking for that public safety plan. So what this is, is, it is asking the voters, because it has to go forward to town, for town meeting approval, or the legislative body approval, is this warrant would ask on March fifth, during the voting day, it would ask the voters to authorize the town to offer the one N plan. I've worded it for any full-time fire or emergency medical service employees. So I'm thinking to the future in the event that, yes, we have a full-time fire chief, but maybe ten years from now, we might have some full-time people in that department too, and this is a, this would take care of that. So then we would be able to offer the one, one N public safety plan to both the police and the fire. And it would be voted on on March fifth.
Motion, put it on the-
Second.
Motion in the second, any discussion? Those in favor? Let's vote.
And I'll have that future sign? Oh, Jesus. Okay.
Five point five, review twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget calendar. It's too little.
Yep. All right, it's that special time of year. So this should look pretty familiar, we've done this process a few times now together. I've got things kicking off tonight, and then I'm going to be doing a department head meeting in the beginning of next week to go over all these things. The, the department heads will be working with me until the end of February to finalize their budgets, and then we will start doing budget presentations to the board of selectmen and the budget committee. As it says, on March seventh, the town manager will present the, an overview of the entire budget to the both boards. I'd like to do what we've done the last few years, it seems to work, and that is where it's presented to both boards at the same time. I think that everybody seems pretty receptive to that. That would last all the way through March twenty-eighth, or excuse me, April fourth, when I've got that as a scheduled voting day. I have got April eleventh on there as an extra meeting night in case, you know, something gets held over or what have you, but that's just a placeholder. Other things are noted in here when like nomination papers are due, and things are due to the town clerk, just for reference. And then I've got town meeting on June first, and then on June eleventh is the June election day. So if the board is okay with what they're seeing, I'd like to propose this as a schedule that we work with, and I'll get it delivered by the committee so they can have it as well and plan ahead.
Motion to approve.
Sorry. Motion in the second, moving discussion. Do you have a full budget committee? That we know of?
I think we are, yes, we do, because, yeah, he got renewed, so, yep, we do, or Elizabeth.
All those in favor? Vote.
Thank you.
Five point six, abatement for Gregory Weyman for account two-six-one-four in the amount of two hundred eighty dollars and forty cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in the second, any discussion? Those in favor? So vote, these are all basically third layers going down through some sort. I don't know what it looks. Um, abatement for the estate of Tiola Rasma, account four, two forty-one in the amount of four thousand five hundred and thirty-two dollars. Make motion.
Second.
Motion in the second, any discussion? All those in favor? Let's vote. Abatement for Edward Adams Jr. account one-seven-eight-seven in the amount of one thousand five hundred eighty-seven dollars and fifty-two cents.
Motion.
Motion in the second, discussion. All those in favor? Vote. Abatement for Regency of Maine LLC account one-one-seven-nine in the amount of two hundred sixty-six dollars and twenty-six cents. So, who? Motion-
Second.
In the second, all those in favor? Vote. Abatement for Regency of Maine LLC account one-one-nine-two in the amount of fifty-seven dollars and twenty cents.
So, second.
Motion in the second, and all those in favor? Let's vote. Item number six, department head report.
I did not have one for you tonight.
Down there is the report.
Um, just a, wanted to ask the selectmen about doing a walkthrough of the police department before the next meeting, so on one eighteen at five P M. Is the board open to that?
Yes, I am.
If that works for you folks, then we'll plan on doing the workshop like we've done in the past, who walk through the PD, chief's really excited, and then we'll come here and have our, when we- Anything else? That's all I had for you tonight, just welcome items.
I realize this probably isn't anything to do this, but up here on Woodmore Road, somebody put a new mailbox up. Hold on, the green one? No, 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 I'm looking about that one that's stuck way out here at the top of the knoll. It isn't, I'm sure the snowplow is going to take care of it, but I didn't know if we maybe wanted to, if we just reach out to them and say, hey, bring it back a little bit, because, you know, quite often if you're going up through there and you meet somebody around that knoll and they're a little bit on your side of the road, you kind of want to stop and you're probably going to get it yourself. It is out.
I can stop one.
Yeah, it's just, I mean, I don't know, maybe he doesn't realize it, but I believe.
Right after fixes. The hex of this tool in there, I figured it would be a two foot.
Could be a two foot, but one of them definitely is how that one, the other.
I'm glad somebody didn't read the orders.
Done quick, they're running the next week.
I'll, I'll go up tomorrow.
I don't, you know, like I said, I don't know. It's major concern, I know they ain't going to make it.
I saw that one like new.
I mean, anything else?
Just thank Jim for fixing that sign.
They didn't walk up to town sign there?
Yeah.
Oh, I do have a question, speaking of Jim. Did he ever find out what that water leak was?
No, he doesn't know where that was coming from.
He was, he said he was going to call the, because water got, it's gushing right out of the ground, he saw that when it came off. He said he was going to call the state to find out if they knew anything about it.
I mean, he was thinking, he was thinking it was groundwater, but it seemed like a lot of water for groundwater, so.
I don't think it could have been groundwater, not seeing what it was. There was a gush of water right up above from my house. It was gushing right up in, in, on the side of the telephone pole, there's a, like a, a pipe on the side of the pole. And one of the neighbors called me, but I never connected it because coming down from that point as you take a turn into Pismo Beach Road, that whole area was all glare ice going into Pismo Beach Road. And I kept wondering, where the heck is all that water coming from and why is that all icy? Till I started seeing all these cars slipping and sliding over there and I thought something's wrong, and then I got a call from a neighbor. So Jim went up and looked at, well, my husband went up first. And the water was just gushing out of the ground, when the neighbor called and said, I think somebody's pumping, well, the way that was coming out, somebody wasn't pumping water, because if you have a sump pump, it, it stops and starts and that, but this was just steady. So what he did was he diverted the water so that it wouldn't go, go back in the road anymore, and then he had to put some salt on it and sand, but it's just, it was just weird the way that water was gushing out of the ground.
It was still running?
No, it, it stopped, um, but I don't, well, I don't know if it's gushing out of, it wasn't this weekend, so I went up to take a look at it. But whereas he diverted, he like dug a ditch so that the water would go off into the, the side of the road. I thought probably maybe the state did something when they did that, and maybe some, something was broken underneath.
He got out there pretty quick, though, which I appreciate.
Yeah. So, that was, oh.
Submitted, ready to submit for federal fast funds? Did we meet that criteria?
For this last one? Yeah, Jim, Jim and actually the police chief, you guys have been working with the E M A and FEMA and stuff on that, so we're, they're still collecting data if I'm not mistaken, right?
Yeah, I sent some final documents, I had to sign today for them.
Yeah.
Verifying all the information that was collected and submitted.
Anything else? Sign warrants?
So when you look at, in your packets, the, on the second selectman item where the police instant reports, the year and fire reports are in there too. Sean provided the EMS numbers and so forth in there. We had about eleven hundred falls last year, so.
Do you want that directed before we sign it?
You tell me, I'm not, I'm not fussy.
Was it, that person was still on?
It was a fixer, or it's good, we know what it means. If it goes on the ballot, how much is it?
Oh, yeah. Is there more, so you're-
There's more than one.
Yeah.
So all the abatements are in there that we just took care of. The, uh, one abatement that's in there is from last, there was a tie ball that we just wanted to correct, you'll see that in there. I think there's a sticky on it.
Anything sticky?
Oh, this is the two, that's the, that is the one. Yeah, it was the faded one that we're not doing.
It was two of them.
Yep. So we are, did we, you took the other out, didn't you?
Yes, I took that one out, yes.
Five?
Four. Four.
Twenty-four, I got it. I haven't got it wrong yet.
I'll get you some. You know you're out of bad one, you just put nineteen on.
Nineteen, what?
They purchased, but I saw that on several others, so I'm guessing I have to pull back.
So we'll go for closure waivers tomorrow. I'll be, I'll be those for closure waivers tomorrow.
We have to, because-
Yeah. Yeah, we can do that.
I still think every time, always not sure we've done and recognized.
Do you have a best of?
Sick.
It's sick, we want it.
I'm going quick. Someone that had been sick is still sick.
It's a good one.
Uh, they got something in the doctors today.
Sounds good, love.
You're too fast, Scott.
Sorry. Efficient, right? That first one takes a while.
You added that six or seven in the first one, didn't you?
Yeah.
They got all the stuff into the pickup kit? They got all parts into the pickup kit?
I had a discussion this past week and they told me hopefully about end of February it'll be finished.
Do you remember what the price was on that truck?
Forty-six and some change for the bear truck.
We just purchased, or we authorized to purchase one today. To have them, and then, not go over there.
Yep.
Same price, forty-six on it.
Um, I sent Leo Chikoyan an email last week also, just inquiring about future foods, what would be available.
Can you get him now?
What's up?
I said, can you get him now?
Yes, he does, I said.
It aren't blue?
And then I have a shortage of blue ones.
Strange.
I try most.
He can always seem to find them, though.
I've been doing it for a hundred years.
And answer them. You sent him an email too, he responds right back.
He's good.
And a little bit animated too, actually.
Thank you, Sharon.
Beth.
Number one, make sure I know any of that. Two five, that's broken, I didn't know.
Oh, I just remembered, yes, I don't know.
Can tell you're counting.
Motion on warrants?
The motion was signed by fifty-six, fifty-seven.
Motion is second, all discussion, all those in favor?
Scott, you're the lawyer here?
Motion is second to adjourn, Scott, chair, all those in favor? Vote.
Motion on warrants?
Have you?
Awesome deal.
So the temperatures changed a little.
Oh, my God, freezing still.
You freezing in here?
I've been cold. Once you get chilly, it just, you can't get warm down. Once you get cold, you're chilly, you get a little. I can't, I can't. Nothing like right by the fire.
There's a fireplace in the other middle of the building.